Recording in progress.
Yeah, five thirty. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Great job.
Thanks Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbuk.
Here.
Ron Vaughn.
Present.
Brad Newbecker.
Present.
Jenny David.
Here. Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
When are we gonna talk about evaluation? Next week?
Tim.
Next meeting.
Next meeting?
Tim, I thought we were doing the committee, yeah, the committee of the whole.
Next meeting, not next week, okay.
Committee of the whole.
Next week's fifth, Thursday.
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion to accept it as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbuk to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries item three, review of minutes, June ninth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes.
I reviewed those minutes and I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Vaughn. Support from Commissioner Serbuk to approve the June ninth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting minutes. Any discussion on those? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries item three B, June ninth, twenty twenty-two, closed session meeting minute. I believe we just looked at those.
At the opportunity to review, I'm making a motion to accept.
Support.
Motion from Commissioner Serbuk, support from Commissioner Scott to approve the June ninth, twenty twenty-two, closed session meeting minutes. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carries item three B, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, committee of the whole, meeting minutes.
I reviewed those minutes. I'll make a motion to approve them.
Or.
Motion from Commissioner Newbecker with support from Commissioner Vaughn to approve the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries item four, public comment and agenda items. This is on agenda items only. One, state your name for the record. Two, speak only to the chairperson. Three, stand behind the podium when speaking. Four, limit comments to three minutes or fewer. And five, follow the direction of the chairperson. And there is an area as well for public hearing and ORV ordinance where the public will have an opportunity to just to voice their opinion. Public comment and agenda items only. Any public comment on the phone? Item five, correspondence. We have correspondence from Marion County related to Juneteenth holiday recognition. Five B, Marion County related to no-fault insurance reform. Five C, Sheboygan County related to opposition to HB four seven two nine, HB four seven three two. Item five D, Huron County supports for HB five seven eight four. E, Iron County related to the opposition to the HB four seven two nine, HB four seven three two. Item F, Livingston County related to election donations. Item five G, Mesaki County related to the opposition to HB four seven two nine, HB four seven three two. Those have been received and filed. Item six, public hearing related to ORV ordinance amendments. We need a motion to go into, we don't, so.
Just declare it.
We're declaring a public hearing for the ORV ordinance amendments. We do have three letters. One from Denise Lay. One from Kurt Ski, one from Linda Keeler, and one from Pat Ranky from the road commission. I will read these very quickly. They're fairly short. The one from Linda Keeler, please do not change ORV hours of operation to five A to eleven P. This would be unsafe, disruptive to many residents, and unfair and cruel to wildlife. Hours of operation should no longer than half hour after sunrise and end half hour before the sun sets. Included should be substantial penalties for road breakers. Please include me as a no vote for this proposed amendment. Next one is from Pat Ranky. Hello township and city officials. The Oakdale County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, no, comments from our meeting. Curfew at ten PM. And commissioners would like to see them on the paved surface versus gravel shoulder. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thanks, Pat. That was short. From Dennis Lay. The proposed ordinance is too vague. I've spoken with many people within the city and was told we can ride our ORV on the designated road and there would be parking near the DTE substation. So we can enjoy the city's amenities. Also, to get gas, we were clearly told we were not allowed to drive within the city as far as just to drive down the road. We are over the dream golf course. I know that the road out there is called West Branch Road. We collectively, as a family, for years have drove on the shoulder in order to access the trails. The ordinance needs to be clear. It would be very helpful to also make known where people can drive and park to enjoy our beautiful town. Thank you, Walter and Denise Lake. This one's from Kurt Ski. I was reading the changes for the ORV ordinance. What I see in it, what I see in this change, the ordinance is now going to require anybody operating in ORV to have headlights, taillights, brake lights, and have them on day or night. Well, I guess whoever is writing this doesn't realize or don't care. Most ORV dirt bikes, off-road racing, quad, do not come equipped with lights or the charging system able to support adding them. We don't require this on tractors, et cetera, driving on the side of the road during the day. It shouldn't apply to ORVs. This ordinance will adversely affect businesses who support dirt bike riders, dirt bike rider groups and ATVs. I would suggest revising it or leave the current ordinance in effect. Do you have any input on that, Commissioner Scott?
Yes, the state law says that an ORV operating on a roadway has to have a headlight, a taillight. So we cannot change that. We cannot go less than that. He doesn't, this gentleman doesn't understand the law.
Okay, you can't ride dirt bikes on.
You can if you have a light, a taillight, you can.
Oh, you can?
But you gotta have those things on it. And then you still have to operate at ORV speed. We can't modify, we can't make less of state law.
Right.
We can make more.
Make it more restrictive.
And that's the same, that's the same thing there with the other letter about operating in the city. Our ordinance says that the two cities, Rose City and West Branch, can enact any restrictions or anything to their roadways they want. We're not restricting anybody from those. The only roadways that our ordinance restricts you from is the same thing as the state law, state highways and freeways. So we're not doing anything differently there.
To address the issue with city of West Branch, they have a designated ORV route and they are going to, if they haven't already done so, entered into agreement with Consumers Energy, actually. Their substation for designated parking area for ORV so that people can utilize businesses downtown. So they should eliminate that issue from that individual once that happens.
They're gonna designate an area for them to park and then they can travel downtown?
There's an ORV route that's gonna bring them in that already exists coming into the city. It's gonna be, I, I've missed the last two city council meetings. I know there was discussion about entering into agreement with Consumers Energy for use of the substation on Fourth Street. Doing Fourth, Third Street. For ORV parking. And every one said will settle their designation that so that people could park their ORVs, walk downtown, shop downtown. Right now, I think they can cross Holden Avenue to get to Shell Dance Station, forward Shell, and also Schmitz. And it'll also allow them to take and get to West Branch, any parts, oil, whatever. So that issue should be a non-issue once that happens.
We're not doing anything.
Process.
We're not doing anything to restrict the city, either city. This does nothing to restrict them. I think it involves them to make their own choices.
Is there any public comment on the ORV ordinance in the room? Come on up, sir. State your name, where you're from. And you got three minutes. You have the floor.
Charles Church from Clear Lake area. On the definition of ORV, it states that the wheel rim may not exceed thirteen inches. A lot of ORVs right now have fifteen inch rims. Are we gonna stick with the thirteen or amend that to something different?
Last. Is that it? Did you get his name?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Do you guys have any, any ideas on that, any?
That was in the original one. I thought that was taken old.
I don't remember discussing that.
The original one written ten years ago or something had that.
The proposed definition says the vehicle must have a measurement from ground surface to base of seat height greater than eighteen inches.
Does it say anything about the wheels?
Yeah, it does say.
Four and six-wheel vehicles, the wheel rims may not exceed thirteen inches.
I think, yeah, we're gonna have to, that needs to be amended. I didn't see that.
Where are you at?
Gee, gee.
Definitely.
It doesn't do anything for the, like, I don't know anything about this, I'm sorry, but, like, nothing with the trails, the size, the width, I guess, is what I'm looking for?
We don't have any control of trails. It's DNR.
I know, but I, well, I understand that, but this size thing, does that really mean anything?
Well, if you're, if you're not going to allow certain size, most years, as Mr. Church said, they've exceeded thirteen inches now.
Right, but I guess my point is there's no, there's no reason not to change this to fifteen inches.
Well, I don't know the, I don't know the way we even need that sentence in there. Just a second. An off-road recreational vehicle, we already know made possible, used to two, three, or four, six wheels.
Sir, go ahead.
The only thing with going to the larger rim size is it's gonna tear the trails.
That was, that was my, I guess my question, does it do?
This ordinance does, let me clarify, this ordinance has nothing to do with the trails. Nothing to do with the trails. That is a DNR thing.
It's regulated by DNR.
This only is operating on roadways in the county.
County roads.
That's all it has to do with. You know.
So will this tear up the county roads anymore, thirteen versus fifteen?
I doubt it. I mean, if they're, if they're doing, if they're doing everything according to this, no.
Okay. Sir, did you have an opinion on that?
That's all this says. We're not trying, we're not, and no way attempting how to, how to regulate the woods.
If they did the twenty-five mile an hour speed, I would say you're right.
Well, that's, that's what we put in here, okay? I, we're not putting in here that you can spin your tires. Or you can do it in the road. We're not saying that at all.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Related to the ORV? So with these letters that were written, is there anything else in here that you guys would like to amend or change?
I gotta go. Pat Ranky was, she's the engineer at the road commission. I attended the road commission meeting and all the commissioners and so all would rather, if it's a paved surface, they'd rather have them on a paved surface. They're tearing up the shoulder. Those tires. But it's just a repeated, the repeated running of them, not, not because they're spinning down the road, but and it throws stones back on the road.
And the other thing you brought up is if you have a group of them, the dust trail from them, it makes it hard for vehicular traffic to judge how many are in that group. And if they were on the roadway, it's surface. Although we need to be able to gauge the number in the group.
Sheriff, can you come up here for a second? Do you have a comment on that? As far as safety, do you have any opinion as far as them being on the paved surface versus the gravel surface?
My opinion on that, I understand what Pat Ranky is saying, but I would prefer to get them over as far as I can. So as motorists can get around, it is, myself personally, I don't think they should be on the road surface.
I agree. My opinion is because they're, they're not paying attention, they're, they're on their phone, whatever, and all of a sudden, they're there.
I don't think it's.
You're right, they're on their phones, yeah. But we're not making.
That's why I asked.
I understand the road surface.
If it was just a, if it was just a comment made from the public, one thing, but the road commission themselves and all the commissioners met, they, they're all in agreement. I, I just, you know, they maintain the roads and, and if they don't want gravel on the roads and, and, and really, there's not too many roads in the county that they're gonna get all four wheels on it. It's gonna be happening.
You know, if the, if they would just follow this, it would never be a problem with any of it. And the reason, the reason we just need to enforce that bottom line, if everybody followed this, and we're not gonna be out there with measuring sticks and measuring the rims. As long as they're driving in a safe manner, going at the twenty-five, we're not good.
I, I understand both sides, but I'm, I'm in your favor safety-wise. I want them over. I understand the road concerns, but I would much rather have fixing a road versus the other, but. Let's make sure. Commissioner Newbecker, do you have anything?
The only concern I got, and maybe it's nothing, but say fifty percent of the fines go to the road commission for damaged roads. And fifty percent to the county share for ORV enforcement and training. Is that okay if we do that? If we're writing the ticket, it's gonna be then given back to your budget.
Fine, it'd be totally up to the judge, but I don't.
No, probably not, okay. I just wanted to make sure it was gonna be okay. I don't have a problem with it myself, but.
Our legal team looked this over. They should have, if, if that wasn't okay, they should have pointed that out.
Okay.
Right?
And I got it on your final draft, attorney approvals.
So, just changing the thirteen inch rims to fifteen inch rims, right?
Do you have an opinion on, on the road or off the road, shoulder?
I, I agree, they, they do throw a lot of stones. So I, I think that riding the roadways is probably better, but we have a concern with some of the roads, but.
Some people won't get over it. So that's a concern I have. So, you know, an ORV on a roadway, they ain't gonna get over it.
They don't, they don't now. They don't.
And, yeah, I think it's gonna be, it's gonna definitely be something you guys are gonna have to look at, because I see them going more than twenty miles an hour right now.
How many hours do we have somebody out enforcing this right now?
Forty-four.
Right now, we have, we have one weekend that we had an individual out there, so we're, we're, we're getting into the season, so we're looking at that schedule right now.
But your ORV officer is not patrolling the roads, is he?
Oh, yeah, you know, looking for this.
No, no, he's not, he's patrolling trails, right?
Trails and this.
Right.
It'll be on both.
Yeah, but it's your, it's your regular road officer.
And our road officers will be doing this too.
So really, you're covering it twenty-four silent. Yeah.
We know where the problem areas are.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's a valid point. I didn't think of the ORV ordinance, I didn't, that was, I was off, as far as the ORV ordinance, the ORV person covering the trails and not roadways. I was thinking.
Oh, yeah. DNR will not enforce this. They'll enforce the trails strictly.
Commissioner Vaughn?
No, I'm, I'm with the sheriff there. You know, I, I kinda think they need to be off, and they're not anyway, but they need to be off on the shoulder. I know the rocks and I know what the road commission's saying, but they go, they go flying by my house and they're all in blacktop. There's nobody on the shoulder.
So leave it as is? So the only thing we're changing is the, pardon me?
Always be visited.
Right.
Would you be, Brad, would you be in favor of just dropping that one line about the tire rim size?
Oh, yeah.
Just drop the whole thing?
Yeah, that whole.
One, three, four, six-wheel vehicles?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Wheel rims may not exceed?
Yeah, because it defines what an ORV before that is.
Okay.
Hello.
Hi.
I, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, please. You have the floor.
Okay, hi, this is Don from Paul Stoker. And yes, I did review this previously. I guess it was probably six weeks or so ago, the last time I saw this thing. I just wanna point out a few things. This particular statute that you're operating under is actually fairly limited in terms of what the county can do. And almost everything in this particular ordinance is being lifted, more or less directly out of the statute. So, for instance, this definition of ORV, I don't have the statute in front of me, but this definition of ORV came out of the statute. I'm happy to go back and double check and make sure we got that right. But I don't believe we can change the definition of, of ORV as it exists in this ordinance. This is what the state has prescribed as the definition for an ORV.
Check the tire size.
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to get the double check.
I've got the statute right now, and I don't see any reference to the rims and where they need to be. So, yeah, probably should double check that.
Okay.
So should we hold off on going forward with passing this or, or moving forward with the resolution?
What, yeah.
Pardon me?
Tim, can we vote on it now or do we have to wait? Or come out of?
Oh, you're in the hearing. It's on the agenda already as eight A, so that, that's not an issue.
If there's gonna be changes to this, can we vote on this?
Whatever, question. That'd be a good question for, for Don, as far as procedures concerned.
Would you prefer us to wait on this as far as going forward with the resolution or?
Yeah, I mean, if it's going to be changed, you can't, yeah, I mean, let me put it this way, you have to vote on the final version of this.
Okay, so we, we better put it on.
Yes, the simplest thing to do is to, yes, is to wait on voting on it until we can confirm this definition is, is what you want it to be and is allowed by the statute.
Is that gonna take you a little time to, to find that answer?
I'm looking it up, see if I can get relatively quick.
If that's the only change, do we have to have another public meeting?
That was one of those.
I, I don't think so, but as long as we have the attorney on soon, let's get to legal.
Thank you.
Generally, generally, the answer is no. This is, unless, unless we made some really large changes to this. This is the public hearing. That's what the public hearing is for, to find mistakes or make changes like this, but this is the public hearing. Wouldn't have to be repeated.
So can we move forward and you can get back to us? Done? Is it, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so we have item seven, action on consent calendar. Are you guys okay? Oh, I have to close items. Is there any, anything else on the ORV ordinance? I'm sorry. Anything on the phone with ORV ordinance? Do we have a motion to close it? So we're gonna close that at six, oh, excuse me, five fifty-three. Item seven, action on consent calendar.
Let's just take everything.
Seven B, we can't. Item A is the ORV ordinance, so how about we do B, C, and D?
We can't, we can't take each one just individually.
Oh, you want to do each one? I'm sorry.
Let's just take each one individually.
Is there, did you wanna talk about?
We won't take that one.
Okay.
I'm already.
Item eight, the resolution to approve disclosure regarding the real estate agency relationships. This resolution is sponsored by the Housing Rehabilitation Program. Oakdale County assumed possession of property located at five one seven one Lake Ridge Drive in Mills Township through the Housing Rehabilitation Program. Approval of the resolution will authorize an agreement with Morris Richards Real Estate to market the property, negotiate with potential buyers, and be responsible for closing the sale at a total cost not to exceed seven percent of the sales price.
Make a motion to adopt resolution presented.
Motion for Commissioner Serbuk with support from Commissioner Becker. Is there any discussion on that? No discussion, roll call vote.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Resolution passed. Item eight C, resolution to approve Region Nine Area Agency on Aging Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Implementation Plan. This resolution is sponsored by Region Nine Area Agency on Aging, Region Nine Area Agency on Aging, a division of Northeast Michigan Community Service Agency, NEMSCO. Produced the fiscal year 2023 Annual Implementation Plan as required by the Older Americans Act and the Older Michigans Act. The Bureau of Aging, Community Living, and Supports ACLS requires review of the plan by each county board of commissioners within the Region Nine service area. Approved the plan does result in funding to the Oakdale County Commission on Aging for implementation of programs and services described in the plan. We have a motion by Commissioner Serbuk.
Or.
Support by Commissioner Man. Is there any discussion?
I'm glad the older guys.
Roll call vote.
Thank you.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Item eight D, resolution to authorize application for the USDA Housing Preservation Grant. This resolution is sponsored by the Housing Rehabilitation Program. Oakdale County is interested in the continuing effort to upgrade housing conditions for low-income and very low-income homeowners. Approval of the resolution will authorize a county home improvement program to apply for fifty thousand dollars from the USDA Housing Preservation Grant Program prior to the July eleventh, twenty twenty-two deadline.
Motion to approve resolution presented.
I'll second.
Motion, Commissioner Serbuk with support from Commissioner Scott. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbecker.
Yes.
Item eight E, claims. What's the total? I don't have my. Commissioner Serbuk, you reviewed them for me. Thank you. Can you?
Two hundred.
The ones that jumped out at me on the likely list.
Okay.
They're big dollar amounts on someone, but animal control, for example, they took and they purchased a shotgun, a light that goes wood, an ammo sling and carrier. That was eight hundred and ten dollars. They got a bill from the rape animal family shelter for some new fees, new funds, they did seven hundred and sixty dollars. And then the fuel was five hundred and nineteen, and I don't know why it was, why.
Smokes.
That came in a couple of, that was a couple of months worth of fuel or what?
There should have been receipts.
You know, I didn't go back that far into, because of those blue water things or, but appropriations, travelers, eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars travelers. Building, got their two trucks, so that was sixty-three thousand, three fifty-nine. Childcare courses, expensive. They had a couple of psychological exams at eight hundred bucks a pop. Some IQ testing at two hundred and fifty dollars a pop, so it was a little more than normal, is I think. District Court had annual software support and stuff, and it was like.
Thirteen thousand.
Yeah, it was, I broke it down, it was support tech support. Emergency management, fourteen thousand, two fifty. That's the annual rave for the, the, the the paging system that comes, gets on their phones. That was an annual thing. That was fourteen thousand dollars. Energy Council was sixteen thousand, so I don't see the rule. And I know Jenny, that, you know, the jail pharmacies, Ben, point with you, that was twelve thousand, one ninety-five this last month, but.
How much is out of the county?
Nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and nineteen cents was out of county. Oakdale County's was just shy of three thousand, two thousand, nine ninety-nine, thirty-nine.
They're sending us a lot of sick.
I, I saw the county gets billed for that. We get reimbursed for it, so. It's a, wasn't the one that really jumped?
Yeah, I looked at the same.
What's the total? Can someone give that to me?
It's a hundred forty-four, was it?
You just said two.
Let's see, prepaid, unpaid. Two thirty-three, five hundred and forty-two cents.
Five hundred and twenty-three.
Two twenty-three.
Two hundred and twenty-three thousand and.
Five hundred dollars and forty-two cents.
Two, three, five, zero, zero, four, two.
A lot of these, a lot of these things, Commissioner Serbuk was talking about, come out of different funds, not general fund. So you know, like, like you said, the building department did receive their two pickup trucks.
Are those getting graphic on the side? Are those getting lettering?
I would assume the other ones did, so I assume they're gonna have those.
Okay. I haven't seen them. I'll have to.
You should probably put their names on the door so we know which one they are.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
No, no, that um, I, I agree. We, we got a big bill from travelers on lawsuits. There was a lot of software, different, different software things that we got hit for, so. Yeah, but it's business.
Any questions, Commissioners?
What is the judicial management systems? Uh, software maintenance for thirteen thousand?
That's what district court, that's an annual, software support was nine thousand six hundred and one dollars, tech support, two thousand four hundred dollars, and then there's a IBM slash Microsoft word support of one thousand dollars.
Register database software or what?
The court.
That's the whole court.
Whole court software, okay.
Yes, their whole software pay. And again, that's an annual.
Anything else, Commissioner Becker? Commissioner Van?
Nothing.
I'll make a motion to re-approve the claims.
Court.
Motion for Commissioner Scott with support from Commissioner Serbik. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Mark Serbik.
Yes.
Ron Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad New Becker.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Don, did you have an update?
Hi there. Yeah, I am a little concerned about that definition myself. And I'm going to ask the board if I can have some more time with this, and perhaps it can come up at a later meeting. I wanna make sure we have it right, obviously.
So we'll delay this.
Bring back a committee of all. Get an update.
Perfect, thank you. Nine, uh, any unfinished business?
We're done with claims.
Yeah, we already roll called though.
Uh, our three months is up.
Oh.
I am going to ask that you guys be there on Monday, please.
Monday, no.
What, did I, wait.
Tuesday.
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 I was there Tuesday.
I'm, I'm just, I'm vocally asking.
There today.
She's so. It's not one person.
Who's next? We have Commissioner Serbik and who's, who's?
My son.
Commissioner Van.
Okay, perfect. So there's your guys' reminder, and you're requesting by Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Perfect.
Tuesday's great.
Uh, item ten, administrators report.
Two items bringing up the date on. First, on the annex project, we had our pre-bid meeting on Wednesday. We did have one vendor show up, walk through the building, was already quite familiar uh with the building. So um that's, that's a positive note, appears that we will have at least one bid when uh bids are due on July twenty-ninth. And second, um, just this afternoon, had a call from the District Health Department. They would like to use the parking lot across the street. I'm pointing the right way across the main road here, uh, next to uh insurance agency for a free community testing event on July seventh from one until six. Our policies don't address this, our parking policy address just parking, so it doesn't talk about that other uses like this, but I'm inclined to um give them the nod to do that. It's obviously not interfering with anything we're doing. And they have worked out an arrangement with the insurance agency, who frankly covers us as well uh for use of their building. If there's any need to use any facilities on the inside, uh, so unless there's objection from the board, I will get back with the health department and tell them to go ahead.
Questions, comments?
It's a government agency. I don't have a problem. It's not a private entity.
For community testing.
Is, is that like a court day or anything? Is that, what day is that on?
Uh, Thursday, July seventh. They had a committee of all meeting. But we'll be cleared out by then, I'm sure.
We don't.
When do they wanna do it?
One until six.
One until six?
That shouldn't affect anything with court.
No.
The parking lot.
And that doesn't affect the, the, it won't be insurance or, or uh the cleaning, um. Gosh, I can't think of the name of it right now.
Showroom.
showroom, that's it, it won't.
No, it's way on the side of the lot that they wanna use. And again, our insurance advisor is, is helping sponsor this.
Oh, then.
Pretty confident that um we're, we're in good stead there.
Perfect. What's your problem? So we, you don't need, you don't need a resolution.
No.
You guys good with it?
Good.
Perfect. Is that it?
That's it.
We can actually let them know we meet with District Health Monday.
Monday.
Okay, elected official and department head reports. Clerk. Treasurer. I see Michael here. Can you give us an update?
Different matter. I'm here on a different matter. I'm not prepared to give you an update.
You have nothing?
I can't say everything.
I just got one little quick thing here. Uh, we experienced one other deputy with an injury. He's gonna be off for five weeks. He's on light duty right now. Uh, our staffing levels are low, but we're managing. We'll make it happen. Actually, I'm gonna be working the road Monday, Tuesday, I'm on, you know, during all our shifts, just.
On the job or off the job?
Off the job. That was common.
All right, well.
Knuckle broke. Five weeks off. He's doing good, no surgery needed, so.
Good.
Staffing levels are down, but.
The other guy look like.
That wasn't the guy. It was his bone trailer. That's all I have, but.
Thank you.
But we'll make it work.
Any other department heads or elected officials? Any on the phone? Jeff, Mr. Nichols? You're muted. There you go, Jeff.
There you go.
Can't hear you, Jeff. There you go. Thinking you have bad service. Anybody else on the phone? Anybody I missed? Item twelve, manage on the floor. Honey?
Oh, he's got the thumbs up now.
Oh, you wanna go ahead, Jeff? Or he's agreeing that he's got bad service? Okay, uh, motions for adoption. Committee reports, Commissioner Serbik.
Oh, yes. I attended Horton and Edwards with Commissioner Scott. He introduced me to the group, but I'm gonna let him uh, when he gives his report, because it was not my townships at this point in time, but he was kind enough to introduce me to those uh two townships and officials that were there. Attended uh Department Health and Human Services short, sweet, new point meeting. Um, we just talked about staffing levels. They're fully staffed. They still don't know when they're gonna be a hundred percent back in their offices. They're still the twenty percent level right now. Uh, Tenon Clacking Township Clacking had a uh quote free dome day two weeks ago, and I helped him out with that. And I'll tell you, I've never seen so many mattresses and barbecue grills in my life. Yeah, I'm sure you have too, Chris. And then uh yesterday, I attended a road commission meeting for Commissioner Scott. A lot of big road projects going on in Ogumaw Township. Rose Township's gonna have one, they're gonna be doing like a gravel and ditch for one mile of Flynn Road. There were some discussions, I don't know, Mr. Ranky talked to you yet, Sheriff, or Under Sheriff? There, there was some discussion about a Waymaster, um. And I told him that they should talk to you first before they, he's gonna be in contact with you in regards to. Then he can, he can, it, the meeting was yesterday morning, so um. A lot of road projects going.
Is that it?
Yep.
Commissioner Scott.
I attended like four township meetings I hadn't known, because of the dates fall in the same week. Ogumaw Township approved their twenty-two, twenty-three budget. They raised their cemetery and hall rental prices. They are assessing one mill this year instead of two for gypsy moth springs. Uh, and the four mills, twen, the four mill twenty-year millage has run out for road improvements. All the roads have been paved in the township. So they're going to put on a one point five million, or five mil request in November for road maintenance. That, that'll be a big reduction on what we're all paying out there, but it is nice that everything did get paid. Foster Township, Pat Ranky and Van Shelton from the Road Commission was there, and they were questioned about logging trucks on Horseshoe Lake Road. They're considering buying AED uh automatic uh defibrillators for their fire department and some of the businesses in the township with ARPA funds. It's a consideration right now. Porton Township, uh, their hall rental deposits increased, and uh they're looking at buying an air conditioning unit with ARPA funds. Edwards Township is checking on prices to buy a propane, buy the A propane tank and purchase a new kitchen stove with ARPA funds. Then they had a lot of discussion on road improvements in that township. The airport meeting, the engineering, our engineering firm is there. Presented information on the grant funding sources, five-year capital improvement plan, runway rehabilitation project, and some of the local funding we'll need to support those projects. Also, our engineering firm is at the, at the end of their five-year contract, and you would be looking, oh, RFP and uh we're not renewing right away. We're just gonna run from the RFP out and uh see what firms we get interested. We're not saying we won't go with this one again, but we're just taking a look at uh, it's a new, new term coming. And then, yes, Commissioner Serbik attended the Road Commission meeting for me. I was uh working yesterday.
Is that it, Commissioner?
And then planning was uh scheduled for last night. It was canceled because of a COVID outbreak in the annex building, so don't, don't really know when we'll get to that. So that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Mann?
Nothing. I've been out of town on family business for the last week. I had no meetings.
Commissioner New Becker?
So I was with uh Fisher Scott at the airport meeting. Um, like the only thing that else we talked about was a possible um solar project. And then uh we discussed uh the direction and uh the department head uh or management at the airport, how that was gonna be handled. Uh I can't uh, I don't wanna say it right.
Yeah, we'd likely do an interlocal agreement that would involve the airport, city, and the county, and it has to do primarily with um responsibility for the payroll, not for the wages themselves, but uh put um the airport manager on the county's system so that money's paid, he's, you know, it's run smoothly. So the reason for the agreement is, obviously, we would need the funding from the airport to make that happen, and the city is a partner in that, so the three of us would likely sign an interlocal agreement. I'll be getting with Don uh about the details. I don't imagine it's gonna be very complicated.
And then uh, present law enforcement call, um correspondence with Under Sheriff. And uh then we all, I also talked to Dave Ryan from Mills Township. Uh, he called me when he notified me that they, the volunteers at the high banks, all the um ramps and everything are stained, and it looks really good. That's all I have.
Need to come up with a plan. Um, that's the, one of the.
Appreciate those volunteers as well, sorry.
Okay. Oh, we need to come up with a plan with maintaining, and that's one of the county properties. Is that on the next committee of the whole?
Yeah, for sure it can be.
Yeah, I think it needs to be. Um, I attended, were you done, Commissioner Becker? I attended the EDC, the uh meeting this past week. We talked about opportunity zones. There's a couple of those opportunities zones. They talked about glitter Township, Rose Township. Getting some more education on those opportunity zones and what we can do to um hopefully um make the most out of those, those areas. We talked about the revolving loan funds, um, and how to get that word out there, and hopefully we had, I think, three applicants total. And none of them ended up uh going all the way through the process. Unfortunately, the economic outlook was discussed briefly. I attended Mills Township. Um, Lance was there. He's always there. He's a blight officer for Mills Township. Roads blight. I think that this past meeting is the one that uh Mr. Ranky was at and Mr. Shelton at this past one, uh, related to the roads. Also, yes, the standing there at the high banks, talked about that property that was cleaned up over there as well by the uh land bank. Um, they talked about one other property as well that, that hopefully will be cleaned up in the future. Village of Prescott tended that as well. Talked about wastewater, their wastewater treatment plant over there uh needs a lot of updates. It's a very costly um project over there, uh center over there, I should say. They are looking at some grants for that, trying to get some money. They also talked about raises. They have a very, it's, it's kind of a unique situation. They're a village. So they're not a township, they're a village, and they really struggle with getting people on their board, and two of their current individuals are stepping away. And the president has been there, she said how long, but quite a, quite a, quite a period of time. Just getting anybody, anybody to, it's pretty much volunteering their services. She said that I think they get paid twenty-five dollars a meeting. And they do a lot. They collect for sewer uh taxes, they do the roads. I mean, it's as busy as my township meetings. And uh.
Do you still have a very large board? Seven or nine people?
No, five.
They're down to five?
Five, and then they have uh, yeah, the other two ladies, I don't think that, they're not considered part of the board. One takes notes and one's a treasurer.
Large board at one time.
No, it's just uh half the time they have to call to get people there for a quorum, and it's, it's interesting, it, it really is, and, and um again, they do quite a bit. They're talking about uh some decorations for the holidays, trying to get that park over there spruced up a bit because it was vandalized last year, and that's utilized quite a bit for the softball league on Friday nights over there. Um, they have some properties that they're getting cleaned up. Um, they do have a blight officer now, who's Howie. Uh, they. Pardon me?
Who's Howie?
Who is Howie? Howie's a blight officer. So the, my, my, the question that they had is how they go about getting raises to maybe get some more people on the board. Twenty-five dollars a meeting? I mean, come on. So that it's called a charter, and I have reached out to Mary a little bit, so for some discussion on it. Um, so we're gonna dig a little deeper to find out how they can, apparently with a, a village, they can't give themselves raises. You know anything about this?
No, I've never had to work with a village, but if it's um anything like, for instance, that you go through with the Board of Commissioners, you can uh vote on wages, but you're allowed to do this like every other year, and you cannot vote on your current term. Would have to start with the next term. And of course, then we're gonna go to four-year terms, so that's probably gonna change, but everyone, everyone, the municipalities all have nuances like this. And sure, Almighty be able to enlighten you on the city and, and what they have to go through there. So, yeah, it's not just a pass a motion. There's probably a step or two that we'll need to know about.
Yeah, which is odd, because my townships do that. They pass a motion when they evaluate their, their salaries and give raises or don't give raises or whatever it is that they do. So this is a totally different situation, which I didn't know. So we're gonna do a little bit more research on that. I'll keep you up to date, but they deserve some raises. Uh, I think that's all I have right now. Item fifteen, general public comment. Is there any general public comment? This is agenda items only. Same rules apply. Come on up, ma'am.
This is any, any topic.
Oh, did I say, I'm sorry, any topic, I'm sorry.
Uh, my name's Christine Detroit. Um, I'm a member of the um Republican Party here in Ogumaw County, and we are having a meet the candidates night at Irons Park at five thirty PM, July nineteenth. Do we have exactly one hundred hot dogs available? So if you're gonna come and you wanna eat, please email me and tell me how many hot dogs to reserve. Okay, um, I think it's extremely important that our voters get to know who it is they're voting for. We've invited every Republican candidate on the ticket uh for August and November, excuse me. And um I'm getting a fairly good response. Those who are unable to make it are going to send a three to five-minute video, or some of them are going to do a Zoom call, so it'll be as if they're there. So we have a big screen set up out there, and um it's gonna be wonderful, so um please feel free to pass out the little business card-sized flyers I gave you.
Okay.
And uh if you're not going to pass them out, please hand them off to someone else who, who will, okay? Anybody have any questions or anything?
Tuesday night, correct?
I think it is a Tuesday, the nineteenth, yeah.
You're making your rounds. I've seen you. I seen you at the village.
Yeah, I've been kind of all over trying.
Yeah.
You know.
How nice.
Get whatever publicity we can, just with fancy footwork.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Any other public comment? In the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item sixteen. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dan.
I don't have any uh public comment. I I think you're you've closed then. It doesn't sound like anybody does. Can I go back and address the ordinance very, very briefly one more time?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I uh that definition was a kind of the ORV definition. It intrigued me because it was so different from the statute. So I was looking to see where it originated and that definition actually originated in the first draft of this that we had received from Ogumah County. And that's why it read the way that it read and I think I assumed as I reviewed it that this is the way Ogumah wanted it to read, so we can change that. Um, but what I wanted to do is take the time after we change it to reread the ordinance and make sure there's no, excuse me. Make sure there's no unintended consequences. But I want to make sure if we change this definition of ORV, which you can do. Uh, then that the rest of the ordinance isn't affected in some way that we just don't anticipate. Because this or this definition is very narrow, talking about very fairly specific measurements, et cetera. So that's that would be my plan, so I I wanted to tell you that. But just for my clarification, how do you want that changed?
They were talking about eliminating that that final sentence altogether, correct, guys?
The final sentence on three, four, or six-wheel vehicles, the wheel may not exceed thirteen inches. Just like that sentence.
Correct.
I still feel more comfortable if I took a little bit of time to reread it.
Yep, that'll work. We're gonna we're gonna put it on the committee of the whole for two weeks and then the following meeting. So you have adequate time.
Yeah, that'll be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Dan?
That was it.
Item sixteen, as allowed under the Open Meetings Act, the board will convene in closed session for the following manners. A to co- to consult with the county attorney regarding trial strategy in connection with unemployment insurance agency versus Ogumah County. B for strategy and negotiation sessions session connected with the collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local two-one-four Corrections Officer Unit. C for strategy and negotiation such session connected with the collective bargaining agreement with police officers, labor council, deputy sheriff unit. Actions on on any of these manners may be considered in open session after conclusion of the closed session.
So we foresee we foresee maybe some action after the.
We're not going to say there's not going to be, correct?
We're leaving open the options.
Okay, very good. I'll make a motion that we go into closed session as presented.
I did upgrade the um. Description in the administrator report there. The attorney sent some language specifically for the first closed session, so um. We want to incorporate that into your motion.
Okay.
Where is it?
It's um on the digital version of what you're looking at.
As as allowed.
My computers.
Well, the the wording that was said was for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, specifically case number twenty dash zero zero eight seven zero eight. Now pending before the Unemployment Insurance Appeals Commission.
You gotta say, ow. Do you want to repeat that? You should.
Okay, okay. Uh, I'll I'll make a motion and go into closed session. As allowed under the Open Meetings Act, the board will convene in a closed session for the following matters. A, the purpose of discussing pending litigation, specifically case number twenty dash zero zero eight seven zero eight. Now pending before the Unemployment Insurance Appeal Commission. MCL fifteen point two six eight E. B for a strategy and negotiation session connected with the collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local two-fourteen Corrections Officer Unit. MCL fifteen two sixty eight C. And C uh for strategy and negotiation session connected with the collective bargaining agreement with the police officers, labor council, deputy sheriff unit. MCL fifteen two sixty eight C.
You have a motion from Commissioner Scott. Do we have a second support from Commissioner Servick? Is there any discussion on that?
Just that these actions may be considered in an open session after the conclusion.
But that was already read.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mark Servick.
Yes.
Ryan Vaughn.
Yes.
Brad Newbaker.
Yes.
Kenny David.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
You're going to go into closed session at six twenty-five. And our attorney's going to stay on, correct?
And Michael's going to stay with us.
Hang out in the hallway until we're done.
Hold on, hold on. Commissioner Newbaker, go ahead.
I made the motion to come back in the close or open session.
Oh, pardon.
With support at seven twenty-six, we're going to come back into open session. Can we get a roll call vote?
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Brad Newbaker.
Yes.
Ryan Vaughn. Mark Servick.
Yes.
Okay, so we need a motion. Go ahead, Commissioner Servick.
I'd make a motion that we authorize the county administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding. Number one, with Teamsters Local two-fourteen Corrections Unit in regards to the discussion in the closed session and also. Authorize the county administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the police officers, labor council.
Do those need to be separate or can we combine those?
I think we're safe combining. I mean, you're you're directing me.
Okay.
Support.
We have uh motion from Commissioner Servick, support from Commissioner Vaughn. Any discussion on that? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Brad Newbaker.
Yes.
Ryan Vaughn.
Yes.
Mark Servick.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Resolutions approved. Item seventeen.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion Commissioner Servick with support from Commissioner Vaughn to adjourn at seven twenty-seven. All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Motion carries.
Your words just.
Oh, yay.
Oh, some of the.
Oh, my gosh, right beside of there.
Yes, many of these.